It's right up.
Right next door.
Okay. All right. Well, go ahead and call this works session to work. Appreciate everybody showing up here and having this hour together. And I do see that we have a full agenda tonight. And with that, we have the grounds, safety and grounds committee recommendations. Ross Chris is supposed to be coming speaking with us and Mr. Stephen Merchant.
Sir?
All right, and Town of Santitla, we'll be talking about the issue of tax collections for them at any time for comment. And I see here that this merchant, you've requested 30 minutes?
Yes, sir.
That's half of our time. Is it a possibility to go less?
I will try to go less, but if you want to, you could run the other people first.
Okay.
And I'll fill in whatever they don't and...
Okay.
But what I have to tell you is really important, so...
Okay, is that okay?
I'll work with you.
We'll go ahead and address these other issues. And then Mr. Merchant, back to cleanup, I guess is what we can call it. We'll do it then. All right, thank you very much for doing that. First of all, the grounds committee, safety and grounds committee. I believe there was a report to do with that. Hello, David.
Hello.
How are you, sir?
Good.
It's behind your jeans. We hear that the name is there, but it's behind your pants.
This is just a quick update of what we've been doing. Now, I can do it, but it's a quick, it's not even funny. You can do it with this. Just recommendations, things we've been working on, things Greg's been working on with us, that we're trying to get accomplished. We'll start with the grounds committee. Raymond asks us to come and give you the update. You'll see that the first thing was trimming, we got it all completed, it's done. He was trying to fix a jail sign, can't do it. It broke off the pieces, bypassed that one. Courthouse plant, I'm working with Chuck on that and the grounds committee, we'll get that done. The pump is torn from the sprinkler system, we gave that to Kim to come and replace that. Steps at the courthouse, only one side needs to be repaired, it's hardly nothing, but it does need to be fixed. Submitted to Kim. Turnout damage submitted to Kim, that's for that spin coming down, it's tore up for some time. Signs is already ordered on the next item there. We're on the grounds committee, I apologize. Those signs is already ordered to stop that from the crash and throwing the things and smoking on the courthouse lawn. They're already here, they came today, that they could have probably in the morning, if we can get them before court. The wiring of the pipe into courthouse, I think Frontier took down all those lines and saved them.
Some of them, some still.
What, it's already done, so we're tickled to death with that.
Some of that, some of it still, uh, quote.
What's left is submitted to Kim. Anything in blue is what we're going over real quick. Everything else is just stuff we're working on. The library on, that's submitted to Kim. It's possible you could close any of the county storage, that's a commission decision, that depends on maybe district how to do it better. It is still beams. Frank mentioned the dumpsters and estimates is needed for the cost to replace that fence and impulse per Kim. So the commissioners should be updated on the condition and amount put in the budget. We are assuming for the fiscal year 2015 with your approval. There's nothing we can do right there, I agree with you. That's probably going to be a significant cost, I don't know what that's going to be. And we didn't do anything on that.
I think we had something in the works on that, that I...
Oh, really? Did you say the sentence I heard you say?
Had to post the fence and that.
Yeah.
Or did the fence go out? Right.
But we didn't, we didn't do anything there. That's, we just decided what you've done and then we'll do whatever you just want us to do there.
Tyler, you'll be handed with a estimate you remember.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
So that's the reason I bypassed that one as well. The juror bathroom, Tammy had requested that the jurors have a bathroom upstairs behind the, where the judge sits. There's all that space, it used to be just for storage. What we've done for that, we've not completed this yet, used it, worked it because they didn't cover it up. They're just going to look and see if there was any plumbing there. And if there was, they think there's old plumbing already there for a bathroom.
There, there was.
Yeah, we did.
We would have had it already.
We think it's there and they're going to try to locate that, then we'll try to get you some cost.
For the, for the next one.
Yeah, not now. This is just things we wanted to consider, like that.
Are you talking about behind the bench, the back of the bench?
Behind the judge, where the judge sits.
Back to the seat. Boxed and...
And it's all been cleaned up for some time.
Fired for a while.
And there's a bathroom at one end of that already, so they're...
Well, yeah, I was realizing, I've been back there. And I was wondering about that, where'd all that go?
It's all, were he done, clean and put him back?
The other room that Tammy had for storage.
So they secure it.
Somebody needs a man.
So it's a place for a bathroom, but we just haven't had time to locate that one yet.
And the next thing that's been read down after the DOT signed around the courthouse and signs are being put back up, that's safety and grounds both. And a lot of things to tell me, Ron, if you're to help with suggestions, we're not telling you to do anything. We're just telling you what we've done, what we've tried to accomplish and what we're working on. There's this time on the ground. And we do realize there's no money, it's hard to bring, we're not... Now, on the safety. On the safety committee, that library on, that was an issue, that's submitted to Kim. The courthouse steps, that's another thing, it's on grounds, that's safety, submitted to Kim. A lot of people have discussed that county parking lot, making use of that space and what we could do with that because people are crazy, you can't get in and out of there. And at this point, how David can answer, no matter what he's done right there?
I met with DOT and of course I got, you got their right of way agreement and they had no idea on what they wanted to do. Sometimes there's funds available for stuff like that, so they're still going to look. Right now, there's none available. But in the process, they, what they would like to see done is curb stops, concrete curb stop, put it at an angle, all the way down, act portion repaid, and then an arrow, inch at the top and at the bottom. And I do have a design for that. But in the same process, they're still going to, we'll look and see if they can stick up with some money. But the total comes back around $28,000, has to repay, restrike and put curb stops.
And it keeps people from pulling out, straight out into the road there, that's the issue. They need to pull in back up around at the bottom, that is, there has been accidents there many times, but it's a... I've done it many times myself, you can't let me get out every time you're scared to death, you're going to get hit. I've nearly got hit myself. That's a bad place that we could strike, got to fix that right. Everybody could make better use of that county parking lot, that is, nobody parts correctly.
But we still want to see DOT come up with some money.
Right.
They're out of it right now, but they checked and they're going to come back.
It's just things we must think on in the upcoming budget connection, they're still working on what they can come up with as well.
Would you send the company the design on that?
Yeah.
And I can take it to the RPO.
Sure.
Real mine.
I've got it, we got all the costs broken down, complete tenders and prescribes and curb stops.
All right, that sounds good.
Another issue, there's no light there, got a four hill plant building on Darkage, you almost follow it.
What did you say that one?
At the DOT four hill plant building?
Right.
It needs a light inside or something. When you first step in the door, it's dark. And when it was raining, you stepped into pure water, if it was froze, you stepped into pure ice. If anybody went in that building. Keep in mind, actually, if we looked at that...
We'll find a hot feet in it, so it's not going to get anybody's problem.
It's hardly nothing, but we think these buildings just need to be torn out instead of making it to the money, any money there. But if somebody's going to get hurt, if we don't do something right there. And if they step on ice, I mean, we're...
But the building itself is secure, right?
It is secure. It is secure, but it's county employees.
Right.
Anybody could, I mean, there's a chance.
As far as light, there's a, there's a hot clean, we can put one.
We can just stick one up, it's not that bad. Old stuff, thanks that already fixed that, I think, or done it.
Yeah, we met up there a couple of weeks ago.
This is update, this is not the old stuff, this is what we did. Going from the inspection, building inspection building, where the ice freezing at the high school, that ramp, smacking the pole there. We submitted after Kim. Alicia's asked that the parking lot, if we restrike the park, the county parking lot, if they restrike that one, that's submitted to Alicia for her presentation, that's nothing to do with us.
Yeah, I think she said she submitted that.
Okay, DSS building.
That's just all the cops, pretty much, with that.
And we need...
Some look at it.
For that, that physical budget may need, we're going to have insulation or something, but, I mean, we're going to have to do something. But we was looking at this back here, that, this roof back here is, have you noticed that it's about to fall? I don't think that would cost very much right now to fix that, we need to try to fix that. There's several spots, it's sagging that we...
That's already been quoted, again, you got that.
Kim's thought that we need to try to work on some of that. Okay? Ground trees behind DSS.
That's a non-issue.
It's a non-issue because you could power it, they'd be crazy.
No, it's okay, we'll take it out tomorrow.
So there's no cost without it?
That's true.
That's another issue.
We did that one, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
I was going to do it.
People that came by informed them that it was in phase three line and that we no longer needed it.
And the water standing on the front of courthouse, I don't know what you can do with it exactly. We looked at that, it freezes into ice, we can't think of anything, let's retire it, we'll find out, we can do it. And that's impossible, so I don't know what should we fix that. And nobody, David don't know what, David don't know, I mean, I...
We looked at it, it's actually, we do, it's a big, they're good piles, so it's just the way it is. Without turning it off.
But that's how we draw. That's just update, you know, keep in mind, some of this with fiscal, you fiscal, your budget fifteen, Frank thought we are updated.
All right, any questions, comments to the lady in general? All right, thank you very much. This time next on the agenda was Ross Chris guarding the second receiving station.
Mr. Chris came in this morning and I told him we'd be discussing it tonight, so I assumed he was going to be here.
Okay. All right, I think this is going to probably be discussed in a forced and regular session. Thanks for coming up with that. All right, ladies, you're here for Santitla town.
They didn't show up yet?
They didn't show up.
What they want to do is take, Grand County take over the billing and collection of their tax bills. And we've been in talks with them about, to us, it really needs to be two separate items of the cost. One of them would be just the delinquent bills of what they'd be willing to pay because of what tournament to go through to collect these delinquent bills. And then the other would be what would it cost or what the county would charge for us just going forward. And, because I have to go in and code each bill for the town of Santitla for us to put their mail rate on there, but when our tax bills go out, the Santitla tax bill's on there also.
Okay. What kind of timelines would that be? I mean, you're going to have to go back to the link one, right?
Yes. Yes. And I...
That must be a problem.
Yes, and I need, I need that information at least by April, so we can get the bills on the system. And that's what I would like to ask them, was how many bills they actually have. Greg has an amount of how much is owed, but we need to know how many bills there are because we have to manually put them on the system.
And they've only got records from 2008 forward, so I mean, they've not got the 10-year story, but I only want the 2008 forward, which I've got 1,000 pounds of payments.
Okay. What's that going to mean to your department?
I mean, we, we can do it. It's just the agreement between the county of what the charge, Becky, she met with the town of Santitla about what the county wanted to charge, we're just doing the delinquent and what they want to do about the county billing and collecting each year forward.
Was it reasonable?
Well, that's where, you know, in our discussions that we're going to have over this is, they're not giving us any indication of what they're willing to pay. So they're leaving it completely up to us to develop a rate structure based on, you know, just whatever we want to propose. And, you know, our, our sense of it is, is, you know, I've got the numbers of roughly almost $7,000 in past due taxes going forward. You know, they have an overall around $80,000 roughly. But we'd really like to know what, you know, what they can, because I mean, we can draw a number out there. But is it, is it something that's very feasible with...
But they're...
We should have given us a ballpark for what needs to be charged. I guess Becky might have an idea of that by now.
Well, what we, we discussed was that because of the, the labor intensity is in collecting back taxes and because that's where you have to garnish with stateside ice and what it, what have you. And so what we discussed was about half of that to collect and make it worth the amount of time that it's going to take the taxpayers office to research and do all that work.
Well, my question would be, is this going to end up being a favor? I mean...
It can't be.
I know, but with the numbers that you're talking about, I...
It's not a huge amount of revenue that's going to come into the county.
That's what I'm saying.
And they, I think, they get a 2% discount, they pay, or we don't offer them. So I mean, that's going to be enough to be like, to put their residents on us, that's not going to be a why.
Yeah, I made that very clear in when I met with them, that because we don't offer a discount, there's no way we can give our bills for them to have a discount. And they were, you know, they were fine with their residents not having the discount. The numbers didn't really match what they were saying. They, they said that the discounts amounted to about $8,000 in revenue that they forego, but when you do the math and it seems like a 2% discount, when you do the math, it doesn't work out. It's a lot lower. But I, I was very clear that if they decided to go with the, with this, if we came to an agreement and they let that discount go, that they were going to have to do a really, really good job on educating their taxpayers to the loss of that. Because they did not want our tax office taking the brunt of folks that were not happy about that, so... But no, it's not going to be a humongous amount of revenue that comes into the county because their collections, when you look at their audit report, is $80,000 or so. Not a lot. And actually, their back taxes are looking more like $3,900 according to last audit report. And they may, they may be higher than that now because they're still waiting on some funds to pay.
Now, we've got a timeline. I've got to make sure that I get every person in the town of Santitla coded with their mail rate for them there before the current bills go out. And then plus, we've got to put, manually put in their delinquent tax bills.
So you need a decision, I'm going to...
Yeah, because, you know, we mailed out our bill and we, we were very adamant. We mailed out our bills first week of July. You have got to have that mail rate set by the end of, you know, third week of June at least.
They, they were, they were very open to that though. They, they said that most of the time, they have their mail rate by June or, that's still good. And you have months to educate, you know, if they, kind of terms, you have months to educate your taxpayers again. But, but I made that point very clearly too, is we, we are able to collect a pretty good chunk of money in July and August because the tax office works so hard to get it out and get it done.
Do you mind?
Because really, tax bills are not by law due until September 1st. But we try to get ours out the first week of July because usually the county's running out of money at that time.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of money comes in in July and August and that really pulls county out.
That's our source revenue.
Yeah, because this past July and August, we got $1.9 million in tax revenue.
Yeah. Well, you know, the thing of it is, is recommendation, because, you know, we, if you want to spend, you know, we go and have a contractual agreement with the municipality and then it's not going to be, it's going to be a lot of things you break, becomes a point where they call the management, turns on. So what would you recommend? How about this, Mark?
I think, you know, a lot of the things that we've discussed, you know, to benefit the town of Santitla is that they, you know, we have the proper channels to be able to train their own collection, you know, already collecting water bills and be able to take them out also, you know, they, they can retain or up the revenue that's, you know, that's generated there. The family, but we're serving women to help out, to, you know, to provide the service. We just would really like to have some indication from them, because they want to accept.
What I'm hearing, y'all say is that they're waiting for us to tell them what they can do there.
Yeah.
You know, they, they don't, they're, they're open to whatever. And, and I can see why they would do that with, with you guys in charge of all of these, in the timeframe and all that, so...
They were adamant that they did not, like, the fact that they're going. And Becky demanded a recommendation, you know, that maybe they could go ahead and just get their people certified for collection.
And they don't want to do that?
No, no, but, you know, we're having to be certified in what we have to do.
Well, she legally, she can't attach, she can't garnish, she can't do any...
Right. And we should make it very difficult for them, like, for them to access. So I think, from what I'm hearing, they're very open to whatever offer we make. And then it's up to them whether they accept or reject. Is that what I'm hearing?
Is that what, you want to just say that you can't do it, she, that the...
She can't do it. She's not certified.
But they're going to depend on the county to do that?
Yes, because they are certified, do it, they're willing to do it.
And that's one reason that, that I said, you know, that we said, or I said, you know, where is the additional cost coming in that's on the back taxes? Because from what I understand, the system, we, we code the system and there's no real marginal extra cost for printing the bills because we're dealing with the bills already. But where the cost comes from is those back taxes. So that's why we want to put the premium on that cost. And even if, because the town cannot attach garnishments and do all those, any penny they get is, is, it's a bonus here. Because those back taxes just basically have to sit on the books until either they age off or somebody comes in and sells a piece of property and they get it. What money they get from those back taxes is, is like a bonus. If, even if we, if we cut, it costs them half of the cost of back taxes, they're still getting money they may not have ever seen. So that's where I came back and said, well, I would want, if it were me, I would want to ask them for half of it. And then obviously, there may be some negotiation from there, but if you start high, then you've got some room to, that you can...
It, it's not a, it's a math, that's why.
But it's not big.
It was, it was $200,000, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be...
Now, considering the amount that's, that's basically, yeah, that's...
Because regardless, if it was $200,000, the county could afford to, to charge a lesser percentage, but the same amount of work has to go in to each back tax bill, whether it's $200,000 or $4,900. So we're going to have to front load that cost because it's creating an additional burden on the tax office to do that work.
Okay.
And once you get it in, everything coded, then the, the main function will be the, what you do.
Go back to the...
And then, you know, they, the question came up, well, how much additional burden is it going to take on the finance? Not really any because we already distribute the DMV. It's, it's writing a check a month. And so once they, the work is happening in the tax office, once they close, then we get a report. So it's just one extra month on the check we cut each month. Plus, of course, there would be a little bit of the burden of running an extra set of reports because I wouldn't want to have to deal with their auditors if we run their reports through the year for them. They can do their own reconciliation and hand it off to the auditor at the end of the year.
Well, how do they go to town in Robbinsville and the auditor?
They're, they're the way we, we can't go there. We can't go there. If you got a counter from the record.
Well, you see, that's the point, is it takes on a lot of liability.
Yes.
And that you didn't create.
I think you pretty well know what your name is.
Nikki, I was telling him, I used to do their audit and of course, they're a smaller unit to where it's, it's not so hard to keep track of any information. But if they, if they account for their back taxes the way they used to, even though they're only five years, you know, they ought to be able to get enough data, assuming they can get enough data to do it. Whereas with the other unit, there's a little bit less ability to get that data.
Well, if y'all, the scenario were projected, what might it be, or is that a mystery?
No, no, we threw out some ideas. I'm, I'm just not sure if that falls under contracts and we'd have to cover this.
All right, all right. Is that, is that present, is that present, if they know, for contracts, that we can't know? Okay. All right then. I've, I've got to say something here. Any other questions, please? And I, I, again, I appreciate the work that you guys, you guys are doing on the Inram and such as that. And I really appreciate the taxpayers of this county, you know? I just hope they're with teams. And you get it called up and say that, that that's it. Again, appreciate everything y'all do. I've got to make one other comment, I'm going to turn Mr. Merchant over here. With regard to the septic, I know that this is a big, hot issue. I'm going to go ahead and speak my mind and I'd love you to hear it the rest of the time. Huh? Well, here, here's, here's what I'm hearing. If I'm wrong, I need to understand it. This board commissioners was brought to a place to where initially with the breakdown of the old sewer system, it was requested that Grand County close down the septic receiving station at the, at the Santitla plant. Is that true? It's closed. And then with that, there was a statement made that they're going to have a state-of-the-art dump station at the new town of Robbinsville sewer treatment plant. And that there would be no need for Robbinsville to have an open dump site, a dump station. So that's been closed. And the new facility, if I understand it, is high-tech and that it actually goes through and processes the sewage that's disposed of and ends up with a dry, dry product. And then they approached us with an agreement. Were we approached or did we approach them with regard to the disposal?
Didn't.
I was going to say, approached me, about it. Took me down there and showed me how all what's supposed to work. Well, they could dump in and they got all the stuff out of what's supposed to be in, drive it out and speed it out.
And it's a dry product, put it in bags. And I know that this board voted on a contract, I have a character, I don't want to go off on this. But there was an agreement that was being worked out. And that there was some verbiage in that in November of last year that didn't quite come out. But we had the county attorney and the town attorney working on, coming up with an agreement that would be agreeable to both parties. And then there was just a point of verbiage and we've heard nothing since November. And now, as I understand it, I don't know if it's a better not, we're being asked to open it again. And my, 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 my trying to understand is, why would you have a state-of-the-art dump station that can handle it and by the way, handle that problem? Want to turn it over to Grand County, who runs out of loss? Because we have to pay the water bill to the town. And then we have county employees having to lump up waste. And having gone through how many motors?
Two or three on that one, I think, yeah.
Last year.
And how much apiece?
They were about almost $2,000.
And the design, am I making this wrong, start with, does it have to put what in?
Yes, sir.
Runners.
Say we spent an additional, I think, $4,500 to complete the design that we go and submit it to get that up and running. And then six months ago, we were asked to close it. And then six months ago, we were asked to close it. And the other day.
Did you do that, right?
Yes, ma'am, last week or week before, I was told that the town was not going to be accepting sewage on trucks. Then we needed to reopen our receiving station, which hasn't been operating in six months.
And it wasn't in operation for four years before this board came on, or members of this board? Well, there we are, ladies and gentlemen. I guess that's pretty much the history, I mean, can you get that one out? No, I'm not rubbing them back up.
No, I think I heard we sent the taxpayers bill for eighty-five hundred dollars, they're about to score it already, is that right? Is that about right, Key, forty-five hundred, two thousand and two thousand? Which should be about eighty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, all things considered, with, you know, we were paying a water bill.
Yeah, that's just pure cost.
And then pure cost. It's the pumps, they're expensive.
And then too, if I remember searching correctly, we also had to, through means of a ten thousand dollar grant, to go ahead and make the elevation on it, where we received septic from trucking trucks, ten thousand dollars. So, and I know that the argument with all this was, is that somebody was following a trailer somewhere and dumped its waste on a bridge that ended up in a creek. And then the argument too is, is that we will have nobody bringing harnesses into Brandon County if we don't have a place for them to dump their sewage.
Yes, sir.
And then that becomes a big hot issue because that's one of that trail and tourism dollars. You know, there's always the convoluted side, and so, you know, there's a, there's always a subterfuge just involved in it. But my mind is hung on the fact that there's a state-of-the-art system that, you know, that was built by the town of Robbinsville, God bless, that did a great and wonderful job, expansion for the town and the benefits for the people of Brandon County that we reach for that. But then they try and ask us to go and sue a debt where there's not any, you know, if it was for every taxpayer in the county to be able to go and do that, or, you know, I just have a problem justifying my mind.
We've done what we was asked to do, he has a supply dumpster and free pick-up.
And it's free by hand, and it's already down for.
And then the town's one to turn it down, and not gonna let it dump out.
We take no actions during work session, but I know that I would like to have a response to the verbiage in the original agreement.
I would like to know why they built a seven million dollar facility and it's not capable of handling the sewer that come out of the pump? I wonder why? Is a facility not capable of handling it, or is it employees not capable of wanting to fool with it?
Well, you know, it's a municipal problem, it's not actually.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, that is. Greatest challenge to block that, they don't have a manhole.
A manhole. And they will, well, they don't manhole check it, right? Is that true?
That's actually what they dumped into, the one dump load that was done, was trained into a manhole, for the new facility.
The manhole was designed together with.
It was designed for that, yes.
Well, we need to continue to have conversation privately over the terms of verbiage, okay? That's how I feel. Any other comment about that? Thank you very much, ladies, appreciate it, thank you for your time. All right, this time, we'd like to recognize Mr. Hubert Merchant, and he sits here for Agenda Twenty-One. And I appreciate you waiting to the end of this session here to make your presentation, sir.
If I may pass out some documents first. A goal will just be bound up together, I'm gonna go through my presentation in the order that they are. So if you're unbound right now, you may miss what I'm saying. For the record, I'm Hubert Merchant. I am a citizen of Robbinsville City. I am neither a politician, professional politician or speaker. I'm thinking about what my English teacher would tell me about coming up, talking to group, and you're really nervous about it. Just imagine all the board members of this commissioner sitting there, naming, I'm sure glad Rainey isn't here tonight. But I say that all in jest. I have some, I've given you all some documents. And what I'm gonna do, I can't tell you, if I just start talking about Agenda Twenty-One, what's going on, I'm gonna miss some very important points. So I've been working on this for weeks, trying to get a presentation that you can follow quickly. So I am going to read a lot of things. I've highlighted, I've got a nice laser color printer. And so a lot of the things that are in there, I've already highlighted for you. If you'd be able to take all these documents home with you and catch all these, there's no way I could read any of those documents to you. Y'all know that I'm running for commissioner. And I'm here not in any kind of political capacity as a candidate for commission. The reason I'm running for the office, I am very concerned about Agenda Twenty-One coming into this county. You've noticed that there are a lot of nonprofits that magically appear, offering you all kind of money. They are going to fix every problem that Robbinsville has, maybe even the sewer problems. But they have all come with strings. So what I started out with the presentation, the first couple of documents that we're going to get into are, if I come in here and start badmouthing Agenda Twenty-One, you're going to think, oh, well, this one disrupts the citizens. So what I want to do is, I want to take you through the problem across the United States, where entire states are writing legislation forbidding Agenda Twenty-One coming into states. Counties and smaller municipalities are doing some of the same things. So if we'll, turn to that first document. You'll see, that is a resolution. I'm gonna make my notes, make sure I notice. That is a resolution that was, the state of North Carolina was working on for, to act on a state level. To act on a state level to forbid Agenda Twenty-One coming into any of the state. It got waylaid because it fell on a short session of the state legislature, and I'm not sure how well that works, so you'll have to forgive me. So what you can do is, you can recognize now, that our state legislatures are starting to recognize this as a problem. The second page on there, right behind it, it says, UN Agenda Twenty-One is really, really bad. The only reason I included that page is there are links on that page that will take you to people discussing the state of North Carolina and their efforts to do something with Agenda Twenty-One. The third page in there is a resolution exploring United Nations Agenda Twenty-One. This was passed by the Republican platform. Some of the pages actually have the names of all the different state committee people that signed on to it, some of them did it in print, so you may or may not have that information. And so, the Republican Party has already stood up and said that we don't want Agenda Twenty-One operating in our country. So if I give you a document that came from the Republican Party, you might have handled it running on the Republican platform, then I think it's fair that in very short order, I'm going to give you a document here against Democrats against Agenda Twenty-One. Agenda Twenty-One is not a partisan issue. And so, I want, while I'm out there campaigning, I want to educate as many people in the county, both Democrats and Republicans, to the dangers of this particular organization. Now, I believe that you should be looking at, you're on the fourth page, you should be looking at, gosh, I have to go back to school, I didn't do this badly. You should see a page that starts out, state, county, and city resolution terminations and legislation concerning Agenda Twenty-One. I'm gonna really quickly go down a couple of those that are highlighted. You've noticed that Chatham County, North Carolina terminated Eakley. Now, I believe, man, you're the treasurer of Harford County, are we paying any dues to Eakley? I C L E I?
Directly.
No, okay, that's probably the correct answer, not that you really know of it, okay. Well, I'm gonna point out some of these that are relative to North Carolina, so that you understand that not only is it a national problem, but here within our state, in our surrounding states, we have other people that are concerned with it. And when I'm finished, I want to give you something that you can hang your hat on, so that you can make some serious decisions. Immediately under Chatham County, you see Callan County, Washington. The only reason I highlighted that is I spent a year in Squim, which is in Callan County, and six years ago is where I first learned of Agenda Twenty-One. I was out there doing research at a secure government lab for a year. And so, I'm real partial to Callan County. One of the things I noticed while I was out there, a lot of. Excuse me, what county is that? That was Callan County, Washington, that's Washington State. Thank you. And I think they reference there is they threw out Eakley. And they have, they've done a lot of nice things fixing up their town. And if I would look at the flower pots hanging, the light posts as I go down the streets, I was thinking, I gotta get some of these ideas back to Bram. So they had done a real good job, but they had done a lot of that on their own. These schools as projects would make the flower pots, they put them up. And the city public works would go down periodically, they would just water them. But the high school suits were taking care of it. And I guess they had contests to see if you could make the prettiest flower pots, but they were all made out of wood and fibers, very nice. And going on to the next page, you see Gaston County, North Carolina. And the title of that article was Gaston County Smacks Down Agenda Twenty-One. And below that, the second line just mentions that the commissioners passed a resolution against it. Now, at the bottom, Moore County, North Carolina passed a resolution rejecting Agenda Twenty-One. There may be other counties in North Carolina that are going, going on with the business of getting rid of Agenda Twenty-One. This document is actually four, six, twelve, so it's not in this document. But a lot of this stuff takes a while for them to, for it to wind up on the internet. Going on to the next page, I included Sparkburg, South Carolina, and I recognize they're not in North Carolina, but that's a sister part of our state, at least that's the way I feel about it. And so, I noticed that they were doing something about getting rid of it. And then flipping over to the next page, I included two from Tennessee, because Tennessee is right over the bridge line from us. And there are, one of them says, adorses rejection of its radical policies and rejection of any grant monies attached to it. And that's eventually where this whole conversation is gonna go. They use those grant monies to suck you into this. These people that are pushing this program are paid professional wires. I'm not talking about the good citizens of Bram that have gotten involved in this. I'm talking about the people that are pushing it, and I will identify those in just a minute. So what they'll do is they'll come in and they'll offer you contracts, and they'll show you all this wonderful thing, and they'll make you promises, and they'll sit down and meet each, you take all of them, you want to take. And then they'll come up and present a draft document. They're gonna tell you, but we have other people that are gonna make these documents for you because we've helped other cities. And they're gonna come back with a draft document, and you're gonna probably run it through your legal department. And they're gonna say, well, it looks okay. There'll probably be a few minor changes. Well, when you get the next document back, you're not gonna want to read another thirty, forty, fifty pages. And you're gonna say, they'll follow no real changes other than what you recommended. Okay, fine, you're gonna sign it. What you're not gonna know is they have actually put changes in it. And when these things go to the courts, the Supreme Court has said that a contract has to be judged on the written part of the contract that you signed. All the promises and every ancillary thing they say that they're going to do for you is not binding in the contract. So anyway, we're gonna move on from that document. So since I have, I don't know how much time I'm gonna really have, so if you pass this on, I'm gonna go through this really fast. I just hope you bear with me.
It's about fifteen minutes.
Oh, I've got, well, I better talk real fast. Next page, you're gonna see a document, I think the title down was state, county, and the city resolution. What does it say? My printer's been error there. And legislation concerning Agenda Twenty-One. Now, oh, that was the same, oh, I'm sorry, duplicate document, sorry, guys. And else? Now, next document may be in your pile, help me if I'm wrong. It should say Alabama adopts the first official state ban on Agenda Twenty-One. Does that mean with everybody's?
Right, that's what we got.
Okay. Since we only have a few minutes, I am not going to read all those little highlighted places that I intended to read to you. But basically, there is proof positive, stamps on a statewide level are kicking Agenda Twenty-One out. And if you start reading some of the things that they're saying in there, and the language that they're using to describe Agenda Twenty-One, when they use words like insidious, you have to, well, maybe I shouldn't use Alabama to make this comparison, but we have to recognize that Alabama is competent in their legislation. The next document, again, I wish I could read these prepared remarks I had. This one is Agenda Twenty-One Legislation Resolution, and it's more of the same. Down the bottom, you see Wyoming, Wisconsin, and it mentions something that they're doing. Then it comes over here, Wyoming, Resolution opposing United States Agenda Twenty-One. Some of the things that they go down in there, and they start mentioning policies such as smart growth, Wildlands Project, Resilient Cities, Regional Visioning Project. Have you asked yourself why everybody wants to come in here and have these big comprehensive regional visions? When they lump you into a larger region, they eliminate your resistance to it. They essentially dilute your vote and your opinion. So of course, they want to come in the seven western counties of western North Carolina, because Brandon County then becomes completely insignificant, even though our opinions about what they're doing may be totally different than what may be happening in an actual. And so, watch out, if they're wanting to do large-scale projects, they want to lump everything together. And flipping on to the next page, there's something about Montana at the top. We recognize the destructive and insidious nature of the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One and hereby expose to the public and public policymakers the dangerous intent of Agenda Twenty-One plan. And then there's Minnesota, right below that. Not only should the United States abstain from surrendering its national sovereignty to the United Nations or any other international organization, but we believe the United States should end its participation in the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One, the World Bank, and the International Monetary Fund. And if I were to bring in all my documents, I can connect all of these things together. I recently went back to school as an old student, and I just graduated with a degree in molecular biology and a minor in chemistry. And I spent a lot of my time doing scientific research. I happen to be a very good researcher. I had been researching Agenda Twenty-One for six years, and I researched it at the same depth that I haven't used for scientific documents. Also, I sometimes refer to my life in the past or other life. Before I came through Brandon County, it really was another life. And I don't mean in a bad way, I came, I chose to be here in Brandon County because I liked this life. But in the past, I've done a lot of other things. But I also spent ten years working for attorneys. In Atlanta, Eric, the whole law department, a whole bunch of different attorneys, covered just about every aspect of the law that you could imagine. And they liked me because I was a very good researcher. I don't miss a lot. And so, I do have some sort of, the capability of reading legal documents and understanding what they've said. I've also written appellate decisions, documents that went before the Supreme Court of the state of Georgia. So I really, I really am a good researcher, and I really understand what I'm reading. Now, I'm gonna get back to my paper here. Oklahoma mentions that, a few things, there's a couple of things highlighted there, you can play and say it. I'm just pointing out the number of states that are involved in fighting this stuff. The next page, we strongly oppose the dilutive collusion of the United Nations in establishing the unconstitutional Sustainable Development Amendment. of the United Nations in establishing the unconstitutional Sustainable Development Agenda 21 uh, in our local communities and our state. And, uh, and Texas, down in the reference to Texas. And then, now, you see on some of this stuff, you see all these, uh, this whole page of where ads and this and that is resolved. Some of these documents actually go into some of the state legislation that they have been talking about, so that you can see. And they do this so that, uh, other states and counties, uh, can look at and decide, what sort of position should we take on this, and maybe we can borrow some of the language from these other states. As a matter of fact, I would argue that law is the most plagiarized, uh, discipline out there. You know, it's always an attorney, hey, you gotta go by on how can we get this document? You could take the image, change the name, add a few words on the, the project. On a couple of more pages, a lot of those are just references, uh, to where they got their information from. And I do have to back up for just a second, because I mentioned that I was going to bring in the Agenda 21 section. Democrats, it's on the third page, and at the very bottom, it's under their revenue. It's highlighted in green for you. It says Democrats Against Agenda 21, and it has their web address. That is a very good site to look at. And as again, I brought the Democrats in, because I'm running on Republican ticket, and I don't want anybody to think that I have slanted ones toward other enemies. When you type in the Agenda, the Democrats Against Agenda 21, you're gonna get all kinds of hits. The first hit will actually be the site I'm referring to. It's, uh, full of information, and it's, it is a good site. But then you're gonna see other sites, say Democrats Against That and Other Against Agenda 21. You will also pull up lots of sites that are United Nations Agenda 21 sites. Look at those and see that what people are saying about it is true. And then, uh, also after they run out of sites from the, uh, Democrats, they're gonna have sites from Republicans. And, uh, so moving on at a pace that I had never even imagined. Okay, you should now be on a page that says Agenda 21 legislation resolutions. Again, this is another page, and often they're all highly the same. And it should be highlighted down at the bottom where it says Wyoming, Montana, Minnesota, Washington, Oklahoma, Iowa, Texas, South Dakota, Wisconsin, Arkansas, have all passed resolutions opposing Agenda 21, so that keep you up to date. And for instance, they have Sustainable Development, Smart Growth. Going on into the next page. Actually, while I was sitting here, I was sticking an extra page into these documents, and I may have it out of place, so please read it.
Okay, sir, uh, seven minutes, just let you know.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it. Now, on the next page, I'm actually gonna read this paragraph. Says the United Nations Agenda 21 is a comprehensive plan of extreme environmentalism, social engineering, and global political control that was initiated at the United Nations Conference on Environment and Development held in the Rio of nineteen ninety-two. And then right under that, you'll see two words highlighted. There's Wildlands Project and Regional Visioning again. You're going to see that a lot. They use these environmental terms to add credibility in some manner uh, to what it is that they're pushing. On the next page, there's a reference to Montana. We recognize the destructive and city's nature. Now, that was repeated earlier. Um, and then down under Washington, it says Agenda 21, the G O C protocol, Sharia law, and others threaten our sovereignty. Therefore, judges, states, and local authorities must be barred from using foreign Agenda laws and resolutions for the purpose of perpetuating United States law. And they go on to make a reference to Oklahoma. Uh, we support strengthening protections for homeowners against arbitrary zoning change with damage to private property values. And shortly I'm gonna get into how that's all gonna happen. Okay, and this one, uh, state here, I'm not sure what state, oh, I think it's still in Iowa. Talking about, uh, of Iowa lands and waters, such as the UN Agenda 21 plan, which is being implemented throughout the United States and which restricts or destroys the property rights of Americans under the guise of environmental initiatives such as sustainable development, smart growth, Wildlands Project, trust me, I'm gonna really get to that one. Resilient Cities, Regional Visioning Products, and other similarly green sounding names. Goes on with the document, talking about Texas, South Dakota, there, on and on. So, I was thinking eight, thirty minutes or more. What can I say, guys? Um, now, we were talking about, um, Wildlands Project. On, you have probably reached the page in your... I don't actually have a copy of that. Did you, keep flipping your page here, if you don't mind, sir? Uh, Taking Liberty. You'll see that map. Now, there's a six-page article there about, um, uh, the Wildlands Project. Now, without having to go through that whole thing, I am going to show you, I have made some extra pages for you that are behind it. Uh, they are blowups of the original documents there. On this side of the map, can you get this? On this side of the map, you see light green areas. These light green areas are private property land in the United States. That's you and I owning these light green areas. On this other end over here, you see these dark green areas, and there's another shade in there. Those are lands that are owned by our federal government, perhaps Indian reservations, national parks, et cetera. The people in the Wildness Project believe that individual lands, neither you or Miss O or any of us in here have the responsibility to take care of our own land the way they think that we ought to take care of it. And so what they think, that all land must come under government control somehow. They don't mind if we're keeping and paying our taxes on it, but they do want you to control everything that we do. They'll come in here and they'll take half your land by decreasing the water seppage in the creeks. They don't want the cows to come and use the water in the creeks, because they might poop in the creek. Gee, how many better cow would do that? And, um, what they plan to do, they are going to use the environmental laws, and they are going to come in here, can you see this? This is what they're going to do with the land when they're finished. The dark red areas are lands that they have designated as no human habitat. The yellow areas around it are buffer zones. And then you can see what's left of the green area, uh, the green free land into individuals' own. They believe that, as I said, fifty percent of this land must be returned to the state that it was in when Columbus found America. Now, they like to pick on areas that have large areas of national forest. So perhaps they're interested in Grand County and Cherokee County is what we have. Seventy percent of our land is in national forest, because they've already got a big green area, and they wanna slowly take it over. Here is a corridor. Um, this is the Appalachian Corridor. That green stuff is, uh, all of our national forests. And what they want to do is, I'm gonna notice on the better map here, is when you superimpose their plan at the tip of my finger there is Graham County. And you'll notice that Graham County is one of those areas that is designated no human habitat. Huh, how are they gonna do that? Also, they're really strong in Cherokee. I have friends over in Cherokee, and these people are just making a mess of it over there. Cherokee also is no human habitat, and we have a little bit of private land.
Yes, sir, we'll have less than a minute.
Oh, gee.
We have to start a regular session at five.
One, how's I'm gonna have to do it, continuation on this. Now, why would those same people that put out the Wildlands Project come up with a map entitled endangered, endangered species by county? Every county in the United States color-coded with some endangered species. It probably isn't surprising to find the Indiana bat and the squirrel. I don't know what the real name of it is, you know, the chair hole, chair hole, skyway squirrel?
It's black.
Or on that, on that list. I, as I said, I am a biologist. We have the most diverse biological, uh, uh, thing we're in the world. When it comes to salamanders, we do have the most diverse in the world. But as far as the rest of our stuff, you know, we're way up there at the top, but it's not the most. Okay, they're going to come in here using the environmental protection laws, and they're gonna walk into your valleys, and they're going to say, oh, look, here's a creek. Let's find a salamander. Salamanders don't travel far from their homes, so salamanders in this creek are gonna be slightly giving them salamanders in the next creek, so they're gonna be genetically different. Then they're gonna say, well, what we need to do is we're going to make from ridge line to ridge line the protected habitat of that salamander, just like they did the snail dog, garber, and spotted owl, and all these other species, southwest chicks, the sand digger. And then they're gonna go to the next ridge line to reach valley, and they're gonna say, we need a buffer zone around these. Now, you already know that we have some species of salamanders here that are extremely rare, and they're nowhere else. I believe one of them is a deer, a salamander, not true?
Sir, I'm gonna have to cut you off, I'm sorry.
All right, would you just get going through the next meeting, it's very important.
We, we, we can see about doing that, but we'd have to kind of restrict the time on it. Because this is an interesting subject, and I know, uh, some about it myself. And I don't have time to, um...
Okay, is it possible that I can get to the commissioners, and you two, sir, my potential county manager, excuse me, I don't know everybody in the department, the position, and have additional private session for this? Because there's just enough more data that when we put it all together and show you the real problem. So I will contact your offices and see...
We, we cannot have private, that, I mean, you can't meet the commissioners as long as there is not a forum. Uh, you can't meet in private, there's no way.
And if not any way that you can hold a special meeting for this?
Uh, now...
But I can inundate the office manager.
No, he's, he's in county.
The county manager, okay.
Would you like this one, Grant, or this? I mean, you can provide some, like, provide...
Well, I, it's very important that you hear this entire thing.
Okay.
And I, I was gracious in giving up the time in the beginning, so that you...
You had thirty-three minutes, sir.
Thank you.
You had thirty-three minutes.
Yeah, well, oh, okay. I was not watching what...
Yeah, we're over, we're over now. Sir, I appreciate it, and I hope you're not feeling like you can run off. We have to get a meeting started.
No, sir, I do understand, and I've had to sit through some of your comments before, and I do understand...
Uh, I think we're gonna have to take some, uh, human comfort break for about five minutes if we can, and I know we're gonna be at five oh seven starting. But please, if you need to go to the restroom or whatever, let's, let's take that time. Thank you, Mr. Merchant.
Yes, sir.